Thank you to all who are here for the Finance Investment and Parking Committee meeting. We're gonna wait for just another minute or so for our other council member to join in.
There he is.
Great.
There's Michael.
I'm having a snack.
You got one of the cookies?
No.
You got one of the cookies?
Look at you with your beard.
Hummus and snap peas.
That's better for you than the cookies I was gonna eat, so.
Is that a Jessica piece behind you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I recognize her cut paper. Okay, anyway, it's beautiful. Ah, she's so talented. Okay. I call the Tuesday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three Council Finance Investment and Parking Committee meeting to order. First on the agenda is the approval of the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Has the council members had a chance to look at them?
Yes, move to approve the January minutes as presented.
I have a quick amendment. My name is misspelled midway through. It's okay, autocorrect does it. Everything else, autocorrect, I don't know what happened to my ancestors. They dropped the A somewhere along the way, but that's the only change I recommend, so. Can I move to approve with amendment? All right, there's a second? Okay, great. Okay, and my seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so moved. Next on the agenda, it looks like we have Chris Mottner, Internal Services Manager, here to present on the hundred thousand dollar fleet approval, or fleet approval over a hundred thousand dollar. So, Chris, we have the John Deere Backhoe and Elgin Cross-Rent Wind Street Sweeper to talk about. I'll let you take it from here.
And just before Chris goes, we did have one late amendment that came out after one of our, one of the other vehicles for parks for the mowers creeped just over a hundred thousand dollars, so he has that added to the list today. Just bring in front of you. Still within the approved budget, just it quote came in higher than we expected.
Okay, so higher than a hundred thousand dollar that we just recently changed, okay.
So he's got that included.
Okay, I don't see that on the.
No, we released the agenda before we heard that was being added.
Okay.
Right, so, so we knew the, the two, the Backhoe and the Street Sweeper, and then it came to our attention that this replacement contour mower also exceeds that hundred thousand dollar mark, so. So we, all three have been approved in the budget, but now that they are over the hundred thousand dollar mark, we wanted to bring it to the Finance Committee as well as it will go to council for, for purchase approvals. So, so we have the replacement of the vehicle zero or three zero one nine, the Backhoe. All criteria has been met for that replacement, and it was, as mentioned, approved within the twenty twenty-three budget. And then the replacement of vehicle one six zero three one six, the Street Sweeper, all criteria has been met for replacement on it as well, and it is also within the twenty twenty-three approved budget. And then the last one that was added here recently, like Mike had said, is the replacement of vehicle eight one eight zero zero, a contour mower, and criteria has been met for that, and it was actually approved within the twenty twenty-two budget. So with that, due to the recent inflation issues causing higher-than-anticipated prices for vehicles and equipment, we have experienced these higher-cost purchase proposals as will be presented within the packet to council. And then, but with best pricing available from Sourcewell contracts, we would like to move forward to get council approvals to place these orders as soon as possible to avoid any future or any more price increases on these pieces of equipment. Within these three pieces of equipment, they did, they are higher than the original anticipated budget amount, and we are noting that within the council packet as well, and that we are short funds that we anticipate will be covered by ERNR fund as available, or will be, funds will be obtained from the departments of which these vehicles go to. So the, the, the Backhoe is streets, the Street Sweeper is stormwater, and the Contour Mower is Parks General Fund. So, so with that, I held this to present to council on the study session of March eighth and the council meeting of March fifteenth with the full packet to go with it.
Thank you, Mr. Mottner. Council members, do you have some questions about these purchases? Okay. Um, and because I don't see the mower in our packet, can you tell me the, the figures that were approved and the figure of the actuals?
Yeah, so the, the budget amount at that time, we, we thought was a, a good comparable amount for the purchase was eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, and it came in at best, at best cost available to us at a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-one cents. So we are short funds on that of twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
Okay, so it looks like when I do just kind of quick math, twenty-three plus fifty-six plus fifty-four, those are the, that's what we're short.
Right.
So about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I mean, roundabout, I mean, I'm just rough estimating here. Hundred and thirty. So, but there, that should be covered through, through the ERR fund or from the respective departments?
Yeah, and I'll jump in. There's adequate fund balance in the, in the ERR fund, and we anticipate overages and unders based on quotes. The authorities at the aggregate total of what the budget authority is right now, so we're not asking for an amendment. Each one of those funds have reserve funds, and then we just, we'll be adjusting our inflation factors going forward with the new prices.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we'll see what study session then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Terrell Brown. Hello, Mr. Brown, you are the asset manager on a Cartograph update.
Yes. Yeah, Terrell, real quick, just wanna jump, jump in real fast, kind of what we're doing. Want to do a, kind of do some briefings, just like information only. We've got a couple of these things coming to Finance Committee in this year. One of them is the Asset Management System that we've invested in, the Asset Management Program. So Terrell's gonna kind of just do a demo, kind of walk him through where we're at right now with some of the systems, just showing you which, what, what we have at our fingertips now and what we're working toward, so to answer any questions from council. A pretty substantial investment that was made by council a couple of years ago, so wanted to thank you, and wanted to give you, give you a glimpse of what we're doing. We will be bringing the, some of the FlexNet technology to show you what we've been doing there later part of the year to show you what we're, what we have there. But Terrell, kind of take it over and kind of walk, he's probably gonna walk us through some screens, but we've got about ten, fifteen minutes for a demo.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, so we got the system, essentially the Asset Management System is up and running. What you're looking at is real work that's been done in the field by the Water Utility Department. This is one of their larger work orders. The Asset Management System gives me overviews on costs, costs in terms of labor, equipment, material, using city rates approved by council and material and equipment rates approved by FEMA. So the system draws from a number of sources, both private and public, to bring this data together. In the system, I can, and anyone who has access to this level of data here, we can see what's being done on a day-to-day basis, how much it's costing, essentially where the work is going, how long is it taking to complete activities? So for this particular work order, we're looking at our hydrant yearly inspections. So far this year, it's cost us a total of fourteen thousand dollars. These are the gentlemen that are, have been working on this. Each one of these has a labor record built into the system, again, drawing from city pay rates and benefit rates. Taking that a step further, we can collect all of this data into various reports. This is essentially the work reports for water resources, right? This is all of their work orders. These are the total costs of these work orders. And this is just the first quarter. We can divvy up data in quarters, annually, semiannually, biannually, however we want to do it, to get an idea of what we are working on, what continuously needs to be worked on, and where our weaknesses is. So a year or two down the line, as we're collecting this on-the-ground data, we get into modeling as far as where weaknesses are in regards to assets. Assets being streets, water lines, storm lines, things like this, so that we know where to concentrate our efforts moving forward. This data also gives a wonderful idea of how much we're spending and where we're coming up short. And in the next report, we get a better idea of that. A report like this would show if we're coming in consistently under our accuracy, accuracy as far as finishing tasks and finishing work orders, you know, that's grounds for talking about maybe we need an extra person, or maybe we need to adjust our yearly, what we expect to get done in a year. Any questions so far?
No.
So continuing, as time goes on and we collect more and more data, like I was saying earlier, we'll be able to create models regarding depreciation of assets and then real-time, when it's time to replace an asset, when it's time to repair an asset, and then we can model how much it would cost to do these activities against these assets and have multiple plans of attack. So I suspect in the next year or two, we'll be getting into that. That's it, this is a little short intro. So far, Water Resources is up, Water Utility is almost up, and then we're moving into Storm and.
And Councilman Younger, did you have any questions for Mr. Brown? Okay, can you remind Mr. Brown which departments are covered under this Asset Management Program? Public Works, you know, under that?
Um, eventually it'll be all the Public Works and Parks, but right now, the ones that are in here are Water Resources, Water Utility, uh, sorry, the utilities, and soon to be Compliance and the Wastewater Treatment Plant as well.
Okay, so, and wastewater. And then what is your timeframe on integrating all the Public Works and Parks? That's a big job.
When I started the project, I anticipated a total of six to seven years for all things. Wastewater Treatment Plant, the rest of Utilities, Water Resources, and Compliance should be done by the end of the year.
Okay. I think it'd be kind of interesting to also see your timeline on that integration, and just in the future, nothing urgent, this is just an FYI, but just to kind of like have that for our knowledge, and this program, this investment that we made in this software and this program, though, is this program gonna live that long? Does six, seven years, is it gonna outlive that?
No, it'll live well beyond that.
Okay, all right, so it's something that we're gonna use for the next.
Well into the future.
Okay, all right, good.
And one thing to note, like, you can't cover the title, council person, is when I talk about a program that the council invested, it wasn't just the application that you're looking at on the screen. The investment is, you're seeing, you're seeing the, the staff right here with Terrell, it's a brand-new, brand-new division, brand-new program and whole, and an application. So, Bob investment to move this forward, but really excited the data that's coming out of it, we'll be able to make decisions, it'll drive our utility rate, so we'll be looking at degradation curves in the next couple of years to make some really informed decisions on where we're at with our utilities. And then when we expand through that, looking at our, our facilities as well, looking at the, you know, the Normdix Government Center, even that's a little different animal with it being a co-op and shared ownership, we'll be able to look at what that really needs, a life cycle needs in the building with all the components. But again, that's kind of further out, starting with the utilities first, which I think is, is really needed to help develop rates. But again, thanks to council and understand how important data is in technology, so.
Yeah, it looks good. I always love seeing those programs that can measure all of that for us, so that we don't have to do the complex formulas and waste time, you know, so that's wonderful.
Eventually, as the, the system becomes more robust and we get more data, we can actually put your budgets into it and then measure your work and things against those budgets.
I think what's gonna be fun, too, is when we can see return on things like what gets us excited, you know, like we work with budgets is when it comes in under budget, you know, and using this program to that efficiency, right, so that we can find ways to be, to save costs. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
The problem.
All right, and are there any other questions from council, or shall we move on? Okay, I'm seeing head nods, great. Okay, we have other business on the agenda, but in other business, do you, did you just provide us, Mr. Riley, with that investment, actually, the investment spreadsheet, was that just an FYI for us to see as just a return?
Yeah, so as other bit, so I don't want to take credit, Sherry Jackson provided that.
Sherry Jackson.
But, yeah, we just put it under, instead of old business, I don't do the old business, new business, so other, other businesses that, if you had any questions. There was a question from, I, I believe, actually, from you, Jennifer, was, how much did we actually get in our investments in twenty-two? What dollar amount did we collect off our investments? So Sherry went a step further, kind of showed you where our money is being held, what the current rates are, what our existing portfolio, the spread is, and, and what we generated in actual real dollars. So gave a, a really nice snapshot, so just over a million dollars for the record, read it in the record, that we, we saw return for the city on our investments, so, and we'll just answer any questions based on the PDF.
Council members, do you have any questions based on that? No, just kind of standard, okay, great. So other business, is there any other business out there? Didn't look like it.
I just wanna ask, can I ask a question? Mike, when you, you, you said something that made me think of the, the Normdix Building. I'm just curious, does the, does the condo model really work well for us? Or like, I don't know, I mean, for some reason, I just thought, like, if we had a chance to acquire the building, would that make more sense? It's just this really interesting extra entity. I'm just curious, is now that we're into it, what, what's about fifteen years or something?
Yeah, something like that. Uh, great loaded question, and we're gonna give you, gonna give you an interesting answer. If you would have asked me prior to COVID, would it make sense for us to occupy more space to take over the whole building? I'd say, yeah, I think there's, there's, there's barriers to sharing the facility. I, I think if we would be able to build our own City Hall and have everybody on campus, that'd been great. At the time, that wasn't what, what the model was when the Normdix Government Center was built. And again, I, I'd like to be the only occupant in one facility, but right now, as you look at, I'm, you know, I see Council President Younger, oh, sorry, not Council President, geez, Councilmember Younger. Good thing Jeff's not here. I see Eric, he's at home, you can see I'm at home, you see Sherry's at home, Terrell's at home, our hybrid model, Michael's at home, Jennifer, you're home. The hybrid model, I'm not, I am not proposing, yeah, personally, I'm not speaking for the administration, so I want to caveat that. Personally, I would say no, I wouldn't be an advocate to purchase more space at this point, but a few years ago, yeah, I think there's, there's benefits to owning the facility outright that you're in to make decisions, that makes sense for your organization, not, not always the whole, I always say that the members of the co-op have shared, I think, desires moving forward, that the building's maintained and to the right level, so, so we have good partners right now, so.
Eric.
Yeah, so Michael, you got me all stirred up, but I'll, I'll pass, but you go down on that first floor, my name's on the plaque, as far as being behind this transaction, the original purchase price is four hundred and six dollars a square foot, which included twenty-five dollars in tenant improvements. Why I remember that number, I'll have to talk to you over a beer. But about, I don't know how many years ago, Roger and I found out that, and I was council president, that kids have Housing Authority needed some cash, and we negotiated the expansion at drastically lower number, more like two hundred dollars a square foot. Mike, I don't know if you remember, but it was quite a bit cheaper, and I agree with them that, oh, this is Class A office space, so it would be a good value, except that the business model's changed, so. But there's, there's all kinds of history, of course, on how we got there in the first place. Yeah, there was the moving of the county seat, I mean, I could go on and on and on, and I won't, so I'll stop now.
I, I will add one more thing for our council to be aware of in this board. Birmingham Housing Authority owns the second floor, and they have reached out to the co-op to sell their interest in the building. So we're, they're working with their attorney, and the, the co-op's working with the co-op's attorney to determine their ability to be able to sell that. They believe they've refinanced their debt in a way that they could get out and not have a government-owned enterprise enter the building. I don't see that with our bond, some of the bonds that are outstanding on the building, but we're working through that. They have, they've asked to be able to sell. So we're watching that. I think there's some, some interest from the Health District needing additional space, but that is gonna be available, I believe, soon, so we'll keep the, we'll keep the Finance Committee apprised.
So that's an interesting provision, because it's always been, Mike, as you know, it has to be another government agency, organization be able to buy into the condominium, which arguably makes it harder to sell. So I, I wonder what kind of price they're asking for.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet, so.
If it's over the two hundred per square foot, I mean, it would be market value, what's it, yeah.
Yeah, so that's very interesting, and, yeah. I, I don't, I would think that the other tenants have a, would have a say in that, in a, if they wanted to appeal to sale to someone outside the government. Not saying I would want to, but we should be able, since we have interests, we should be able to assert our interest in case they do.
So, yeah, the ownership group has first red refusal.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Can I also ask if there's any, um, new updates from Melinda on parking? Since I haven't been on the committee for a few years, or actually one year, I guess, is there anything, anything up with parking going on?
Um, well, we have one contract renewal that is very close, and I expect that I should have it to you by the end of March, Parking Finance Committee. And, and then additionally, we have our Go-For, which I expect that probably will not be implemented until the end of the year. Two minor items that maybe you're not aware of, we did install all of our van, our van pool parking stalls on street throughout the city, we have those in six different locations, and PSNS and IMF have requested, requested those, and they have been utilizing several of them. So we're kind of working with them to share that information and to move that program forward. We were informed that they would be doing some hiring and expected added county transit usage, so they were wanting to share those van pool locations with them. And we are seeing stalls being used, I think, as a result of that effort. And then we also have our second, so again, a very kind of minor thing, but it's in the parking world, so, and it's new, we have installed our second St. County sign at the Conference Center, Harborside. So on the green levels, both the green and the red level, and, and those have been working well. You know, just helps people to know they can go in, you know, maybe a little more professional messaging eventually, and probably not too soon, but just in the future, we'll be able to connect the status of those available stalls out to parking search engines, you can go out to, you know, parking Bremerton, Parkpedia, and you can see those stalls with an actual St. County. Again, small and minor change in the overall parking world, but just some little things to note.
Are we still leasing parking in the Washington Garage to the port?
That has ended, affected February one, that is back to metered parking, and we are seeing that usage go right back up. Probably have some other minor changes in there, potentially new signage for that area. And we are seeing demand on that go back up, but not at a very high rate.
Are we still offering the merchants, the downtown merchants discounted space for their employees was the top floor?
Yes.
Is that anything we could expand if we're not filling up the garage?
Yes, actually, we, we already have expanded that in a minor way. We have that at, we actually, they're offering hundred and thirty stalls in that garage to downtown merchants, and they will typically park levels seven through nine, but usually it's around level seven.
Right, well, I feel up to date.
I feel like I learned some new things. Thank you, Michael. Um, I just want to make sure I'm clear, though, the port at one point in time had in all of their lease agreements that they had a spot covered, so that is no longer in their agreements?
Um, so they were leasing the second floor of the Washington Garage while they were building Marina Square. And Marina Square is completed and open for occupancy, so they moved all of their port tenants into the Marina Square garages.
Got it, okay, all in the Marina Square. Perfect. Just a quick question about that Marina Square. What's the height, what's the height restriction? It doesn't have, right, because I know people who have vans, and they weren't, you know, they're not gonna probably be able to park in those spots.
Um, so that garage is a little bit newer, so it does have higher ceilings than our Washington Garage does. Washington Garage is a very old garage, the much lower ceiling, so you hear about that issue occurring in that garage, but it really is sort of specific to some of those older garages, so in our more modern garages, newer garages, that isn't as much of an issue. Again, that's, you know, that is a little bit outside of our real house, we don't own that garage, those are not our tenants, so. But we're always available to help if anybody has issues finding parking, we're happy to help.
I had a friend who was, had a brand-new BMW, and he decided to try to back it in to one of those center spots in the Washington Garage and shattered his windshield, his rear, rear window, so.
Yeah, those are, those are, some of those are super awkward, because they're low, yeah.
Yeah, my truck, my truck won't fit.
Yeah. They got sloped, okay. Okay, I think, is there anything else? Michael, you got anything, any other parking questions? Now, this is good for me, you know, as the newbie here amongst.
Yeah, our, our next meeting had some parking topics, you just got, you kind of got ahead of us there, Michael.
Nice.
We had to kind of hold off on one we hadn't finalized, kind of where we needed to be with the, the impark contract, but the next meeting is gonna be heavy, heavy parking and contracts, so.
Um, I have two things that are really aren't finance investment-related, I don't think, but we, we have, but Chris is here, or he's gone? Is he gone?
He's still here.
Okay, we contract the security, not only, is it mostly for parking garages? Can you tell me some of the other, I'm, I'm not on Public Works, so if I'm crossing over into something not germane, somebody please tell me. But can you tell me, I mean, the, the hired security is responsible for more than just the garages?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, so they, they also patrol the Conference Center, and they patrol some city general fund facilities, like the Navy Museum, the Courts Building, and the Library, and then they do utility buildings out in the Gorst area that we've had some past problems, so, so they do the forestry warehouse, forestry pipe yard property, as well as the Water Resources Pump Station One and Jarstead Park restroom building and park itself.
Great. So that I can keep this germane, I'm gonna email you on a complaint that I got that was not related to finance and parking. And then, I'm gonna go ahead and say this, even though it's not germane, but I think, I'm not sure, but I think there's a deer that's stuck in the wastewater, the old wastewater treatment plant that's over off of Stephenson. It's all barbed wire, but I keep seeing the same deer looking at me. Anyway, I'm just putting that out there. I don't think it can jump over the barbed wire, okay? That's it.
Yeah, that, that deer, they, they've chased it out, and when they leave the gates open, it comes back in.
You know what I'm talking about?
Let it out, and you know.
And then it comes in and then it just hangs out, it must be fine, but I don't know, you know, it must be doing fine, that's, you know which deer, we gotta name the.
I do, I, I, yeah, I seen that deer in there and, and questioned the treatment plant staff. And they go, we tried to let it out, we chase it out, and it comes back the next day and.
We, let's honor everybody else's time, we don't need to talk about the deer team, but I'm glad this is, this deer is known. So it's not just, I'm not just crazy, people are also experiencing deer issues. And Eric's got a phone call he's gotta take shortly, so we'll go ahead and conclude the meeting, unless there's any other business anybody else has today.
Yeah, we can wrap up.
Okay, I motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you for your time, everybody, I'll see you next month.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.